We're going to get started here. I do need a motion from council for a mayor.
I say we do the mayor. I say we do either Jeff, Andy, Warren, or Rose. I make a motion to the pen and pen to the... Penny's done it already once, you know? So I think it's fun to...
We have one. We've got a motion.
I'm good, so I'll...
We have a second discussion. Well, no, 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 we still need to vote. We got a motion and a second. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I can make you a sign if you'd like.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, and thank you, council, for the opportunity to serve in Mayor Haas's place. Hope everybody had a wonderful holiday weekend, Labor Day, safe, and got to spend time with family. A couple of few of the council members, and it sounds like everybody took advantage of that. I hope the community enjoyed it and the fireworks as well, so... This meeting this evening shouldn't be the two-two tax... Oh, that's a bad pun. It shouldn't be... It should be relatively straightforward. I think we're gonna have a good discussion about our tax rate. So without further ado, if we may rise for the pleasure of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, evergreen, and just...
Thank you. Melissa, go please call the rule.
Mr. Blackwell, here. Mr. Bilder.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Beadle.
Here.
Mr. Law.
Here.
Mr. Stein.
Here.
Okay, and we're seven and two on the doct, so I think we can open up the tax rate in public here, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, normally, uh, normally Mayor Haas would read this, but I will play Finance Director for the evening and read the legal notice that was, I believe that was posted to consecutive Thursdays. Is it by not mistaken, Melissa?
Yes.
You just realized this a while ago.
Yes.
Okay, now we're back on. Proposed tax rate for 2023 is .348 per $100 of valuation. Revenue anticipated $6,392,970. The tax rate proposed for 2022 was $3.337 per 100 evaluation. That drew revenue of $6.148 million. The compensating rate for 2023 was .335 per $100 of valuation. That would have brought in revenue of $6,154,152. Revenue from new property this year is $8,160 total. Revenue from personal property is $40,661. And the general areas of allocation for these funds are primarily personnel utilities and supplies for the city. So at this point, uh, 7:04, I'll open up a public hearing if anybody would like to have comment.
Melissa Valerain.
Oh, sorry.
Melissa Valerain, 45, Lockwood Place. So I think you cut out where we mentioned, Joe, where it was posted to consecutive Thursdays.
Um, Melissa, that was posted to consecutive Thursdays.
To where?
Lincoln K Y, which is the paper of record for Campbell County currently.
So is that posted in... Because they only do a... Uh, I'm just trying to clarify, because I don't know this. They only do a print format once a month.
It was online.
So it's...
Online. Legally allowed by the state.
No, that's, no, that's cool. I just wasn't, I wasn't sure, because I don't recall seeing that, and I know I read it. So what, what section is it posted under?
Under legal ads.
Under legal ads, okay. All right.
I believe it was 1/18th and then 25th.
As you do weekly, papers.
If you pay.
Yes, if you pay, so it's different.
I know, it's not weekly.
No, I get them, I get them by sort of... Yeah, I get them by sort of...
You can pay and get them.
Okay, it's cool. No, I thought it's still monthly for pay. So I guess my next question is, that's great that that's out there. I don't know if a lot of people knew that. I knew it was gonna be posted out there, that it was gonna be the paper of legal record. But my question is, can that be posted as a hyperlink to the agenda? So that if people did not see it in the link, that they can click on the hyperlink? And it would show exactly what Joe read? Is that something that can be done?
I thought it was posted on the website with the agenda.
The, the actual verbiage?
It wasn't?
The, the actual verbiage, I don't believe so, but I...
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look at that, and if not, we'll have it posted up there tomorrow.
So, so I, that, that would be great, Matt. But my question is, and I don't know if I bring it up here, but going forward, can we have the hyperlinks posted to the ordinances, resolutions, and orders? So that we all can have visibility to them before the meeting? Because that's great that the legal things that need to be posted on the link are out there. You know, we'll be aware to look for them there, but the resolutions don't, aren't legally...
You're saying you aren't seeing the legislations before the meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep.
Great. Yeah, that'd be great if that could happen. Thank you.
And that's good feedback. And kind of just, just to piggyback a little bit, there's, and I know Matt's mentioned this and everybody on council, but really, the citizen input is, we draw so much of what we do here from citizen input, so incredibly important, and I appreciate that. Anybody else like to speak to the tax rate?
Okay, then we can officially close that public hearing as 7:07. Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, um, we've got our minutes from our August 21st meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes? Does everyone have a chance to review them? Move the motion.
I'll motion it through.
For the second.
For the call in favor?
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Okay. Moving on, we've got our visitor to communications. So I've got the list here from folks who signed in. We'll start there. And if, if any of you were not able to sign in, just let me know once we get through the list. Number one is Ms. Julie Reckley.
See? My name's Julie Reckley. I live at, on Alpine Drive, 25 Alpine Drive. I'm here. I already talked to Jeff about the golf carts. I, I'm not, originally, when they first came out, I was like, oh, excited, great. Then, after I started seeing them and seeing a lot of things going on, hearing about accidents in other states, other cities, not here, how dangerous they were. And I, on more than one occasion, I've seen where it's a four-person golf cart. There's a mom driving. Every time I've seen it, it's been a woman, and maybe it's not a mom, I don't know, with five kids in a four-person golf cart. I've never seen any child in a golf, in a car seat. And it just concerns me. I, I actually saw something yesterday. I saw somebody I knew driving one, and their child, I know, is only two years old, and it was in the front seat, no car seat. I'm not sure if they had seatbelts on or not. And I've talked to somebody that knows police officers, and they said that they don't get a lot of support for enforcing golf cart rules. I'm not sure if that's true. But anyway, I suggested, and one of my suggestions is, because I don't think people read the KRS Chapter 189 when they get a golf cart, because it's a lie. So I found this on the Fort Thomas website, but it just has the regulations for what the golf cart should have on it. It doesn't have anything about child safety. So I'm asking if there's any way to get the child safety regulations, which I know that they're the same that apply for a car, I guess. I mean, I don't, I don't under, I mean, I understand Jeff said the reason you can have a car seat in the front of a golf cart is because there's not airbags, but I still don't think it's that safe.
Well, that's not, that's what nobody said. We were talking about kids sitting in the front of, and I'd say because of airbags.
Right.
I, I did discuss with Casey in that, and we, we were brainstorming. So your suggestion to, to maybe copy and paste that from the KRS specifically to the kids and maybe put it on, on the ordinance?
At least that. I actually would like to see you have an age limit for children who need to ride a golf cart personally, but that's my personal opinion.
Yeah, so, so we were brainstorming about what to do and how to make more, bring more awareness to the, the rules that go with KRS 189. And it, it, between Matt and Casey and myself, we'll figure something out. It'll, we'll, we'll do something with it. But it'll be, we'll figure out something creative to, to do and bring more attention to the fact that they need to follow the state statute.
Because I'm telling you, they're not. I have not seen one child in a car seat, not one. And I don't see a whole lot of kids, but I've heard from friends, because I know you said that you've got a lot of support for the golf carts. On the other hand, the people I talk to hate the golf carts. They think they're really dangerous, so... And I understand you guys are city council, but I'm not sure if you've really contacted all your constituents, because I haven't talked to anybody that likes them, but anyway, I just would request that you consider sometime thinking about putting an age limit on it. I just don't think a two-year-old in a car seat is safe in a golf cart. And I know you said there haven't been any accidents in Fort Thomas, and that's great, but there have been accidents other places.
Ah, it's not true.
It's not true.
There's accidents. There was one behind the country road that a woman, Ella broke her arm. There was a gentleman that just got pinned against the car for a turnaround, but that's gonna happen with cars as well, too. I mean, so that's not just golf carts.
But they're more dangerous in a golf cart.
I think, I personally think golf carts are a little more dangerous. That it's getting more tougher and tougher to insure them due to the fact that they're now $17,000, $20,000, plus accidents that do happen are dangerous. And, you know, and they were always used as off-road vehicles, so people are starting to try to understand it. I think there's a give and take with it, though, but I'm, I'm with you. I think if, I think if you enforce it a little bit, I think if we pull a few more people over for the door, not what they're supposed to do, I think that will set a message.
Maybe, but I just think even if you just simply put something on here, I don't know if you have a record of the people that have golf carts, if you can send it out to them. I'm just concerned. I mean, I'm just a concerned citizen. I've never been to a city council meeting before, and I've lived there for 59 years. And I've never been to, and it just, it's really bothering me. I worry about the kids. I don't want to see an accident. That's all I'm asking, is you just consider what you can do about the small children.
Julie, I have your email, so I'll, I'll, once we've talked about it, most likely it's just gonna be an email to the owners. We're probably gonna check our, change our flyer to make sure that they know they need to follow the, the child seats, and then I'll email you back and let you know what we found out.
All right, but my question is, do you have a record of all the people that have golf carts?
Yes.
If you could get a message out to them?
Yes.
All right, because I did send a message to the person that I saw yesterday. I just did it while I was sitting here. So I'll see what kind of response I get. But, because I knew that person, but I didn't know the other people that I've seen. So, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just add to that, too. I mean, Mrs. Reckley, that's, that's great feedback, and it's not a conversation that we take lightly. We've, I know the golf cart conversation has gone on, and we've spent a lot of time discussing ways to, you know, make it as safe as possible. Obviously, there's a certain element of personal responsibility. That goes along with the scooters. That's what I wanted to mention. I've had, just in the past week, some conversations and, and brought Matt into them, just, there's a lot of concern about the safety of the scooters. We've all seen it, whether they're on sidewalks, or in the street, or crossing intersections, and so, you know, there's, there's only so much we can do to some extent, but we, we can certainly work consistently to improve safety. And the one thing I'd mention that, that Matt brought up at the meeting in August is the sheriffs. I think I'm pronouncing that correctly. And I don't know if you're familiar with that, but the city has a plan, at least on the, the main avenue, north and south Fort Thomas, where we want to encourage drivers of cars to favor the inside lane when possible, so that that provides some, some more leeway. There's two, the outside lane on each side for whether it's, whether it's the golf carts, or the scooters, or the bicycles. So it is something that we take very seriously. I can, I can assure you that, and your feedback's very helpful.
All right, thank you.
Up next on the list, we have Melissa Hell Green.
I'm good. Mine, mine have been the best. Thank you very much.
Okay, no problem. Third, we have Helen, and I apologize, Helen, I can't read the last name.
Long.
Helen Long, okay, thank you.
It fits. Hi, I've lived here 58 years. I've never been to one of these either. Um, I'm not gonna get too close. I talk loud, anyway. I'm here to talk about the sports complex, and I have safety concerns with traffic. First of all, they never informed anybody who lives on Sergeant, Tony, Shamrock, Delta, that they were doing anything. We kind of found out about it and showed up at the mess hall and then saw the drawing, then we had even more concerns. At first, we were told they were moving Sergeant, uh, I mean, yeah, the end of Sergeant Avenue over. And one of our big concerns was we were gonna have to go up and down Delta. Any of you sitting here have ever been up and down Delta, you would understand all of our concerns about that. It is very tight street. You can't do anything. But I look at Carmel Manor Nursing Home, and I have a concern, has there been a traffic study done on this sports complex they want to put in? Because not only our neighborhood, but the nursing home back there at Carmel Manor, we have to be able to get fire trucks, ambulances, police, garbage trucks, deliveries back there. And I'm all for a soccer field, but this complex seems like it's gotten way out of hand. And I don't like at all what they've proposed, and to me, they've kind of gone behind our backs. And there hasn't been a whole lot of input to all of us residents, and there's a lot more intent houses back there, in case you guys didn't know that. And anyway, uh, th- those are my concerns, our traffic and, and deliveries and being safe back there, being able to get stuff back to our communities, to Carmel Manor, because I work there. I'm very worried about that. People getting there for their family members, people, you know, if we have major stuff and there's big traffic, that's gonna really cut off Carmel Manor. Not to mention a problem for us, but I'm also talking on their behalf tonight. Now, um, I have someone who's done surveys for all of us residents back there. I, I think a lot of people commented on them, and I'll let her talk further, but those are my major concerns, is traffic, safety for us, and a lot of, you know...
Helen, do you, I don't think I have your contact at all, but if you could get with me and we can talk about some of those traffic issues, and I think...
Yes, I live at La Grisamy Terrace, which is back there off Sergeant Avenue.
Would you be able to call me or email me if I give you mine?
Sure. Absolutely. Would you like to come get it?
That is if I have one.
I don't have it.
There you go. Yeah, you could just call me or... Thank you.
I think a lot of us have the same concerns, so if you're gonna address the traffic things separately that are fact, I think a lot of us have one of the same information.
Yeah.
Barrett, can, do you guys just, I have like a little...
Yeah, I mean, I've offered, you know, myself and the school both offered to meet with the residents, that we can, if we wanna have a meeting...
So that's not, yeah. Is it my turn?
Yeah, this is back here next on the list.
Yeah.
Um, key back to 64 Sergeant Avenue. Um, I've tried requesting lots of meetings and not got them, so I don't know if you...
Have you ever requested a meeting with me?
Not with you, because you are not, I guess, no one has said you're not part of, I guess, the, from my understanding, the school board.
Correct, but I emailed to you, I think, like, my last ever email was, I've sent to you, I've always offered that, so... It is a school project, but I'm more than willing to...
Yeah, so...
To listen and try to see if I can help.
So, um, I'll start out with, I kind of wrote a bunch of stuff, so that it's systematic and kind of easy, so everyone can be heard. So I was kind of, I wrote a lot. Good luck, everybody. Do you want to write? So I'm addressing our neighborhood for the concerns that, about the, the complex. My first question is, has the land swap been voted on?
No.
Okay, the second is, has the city council approved the $517,000 to move our road?
Yes.
When was that?
For the project, it was a part of the budget that was passed in June.
Was that at a city council meeting?
Yes.
In June?
Yes, at a first reading, uh, the first Tuesday in June, and then the second reading was at Thursday. I'm sorry, Monday, first Monday.
So in June, it was voted on?
Yes, and we also discussed it at the finance committee meeting that I believe.
Are those buried in, like, notes somewhere? Because I've tried, like, reading transcripts and the notes and stuff. I've just not seen...
No, I can send you the budget. It's, it's aligned on in the budget.
Okay, I guess I was looking more, I was looking at those...
I have 10 minutes.
Okay, um, so after reviewing a lot of the council meetings, green space meetings, like the committee meetings, I have repeatedly heard council members and green space committee members make references made by residents on Mayfield, Bridge Memorial, and Riverside Parkway. Those residents had concerns about sound from pickleball, tennis courts, traffic from baseball games, traffic with skate park or a splash pad. There were multiple city council meetings about splash pads or skate parks. Bridge Memorial Neighborhood didn't want their neighborhood to be a destination park, so they opted, they said they did not want a bathroom, because they want it to be a neighborhood park. Riverside Parkway, they were able to collaborate with the city for a pocket park. So I think we just want the same respect. A man that lives 100 yards, literally next to the complex, had no idea any of this was happening. He had no clue any of it was happening, because no one has reached out to him. We want to be treated as, as, with as much respect as the other neighborhoods. It's a much, much larger scale project that affects far more residents than just our neighborhood. The example would be the Egress at Midway in Fort Thomas. If the complex is as big with wanting to have college games there, is which they said, they want to have college games and all of those, I'm not sure how traffic would work at those intersections, not just our neighborhood. Um, and from what I continue to ask, it's nothing has been transparent. I've asked about traffic studies and environmental studies, watershed studies, and nothing has been shared. The, uh, the school board had one meeting, and it was through an email to Fort Thomas City School. So if you have a kid in the school, that was the only way you were known about it days before the meeting. At that meeting, there was no public comment, meaning there is nothing on record from what anybody in our community wanted, because they didn't have a public meeting. It broke us up into groups, and they didn't contact all of us with the questions that we did ask. At that meeting, and this is where some of these comments are coming by, over half of the school board, when asked how many houses are in our neighborhood, thought 15. Do you guys know how many houses are in our neighborhood?
100, 105 or so.
Thank you. Anybody else? I, I just think it's astonishing that they are doing a project that they didn't know that there were 100-plus houses in the neighborhood, and they want, they didn't include any of us to collaborate. At that meeting, I also asked multiple times if there would be other meetings that would happen, so that we could give input of what we want. In the survey, if you guys had a chance to look at, you probably haven't, but the majority of the neighborhood thinks it needs an upgrade. No one doesn't want, we want our home values to, to, to raise. We want, we want this with Fort Thomas. But there's been zero collaboration with that. I asked again if they're gonna have other meetings, and they said no, because they want to start the project in October, so there would be no more public input at all. That we could email them. I have emailed back and forth with Mr. Robinson. My neighborhood was very fortunate that we have asked for somebody to listen to us, and Andy Ellison came to our neighborhood with his feet on the ground and listened to our concerns. He had a pen and a paper. He didn't tell us the, he didn't tell us what, what he thought we wanted to hear. He listened, and he wrote it down. If he had an answer, he would say, this is how city council works. This is how the board works. This is how this law works. No one else has given us that respect. They talk at us and tell us, it's gonna raise your home value. This is good for you. You guys don't like the lights, I was told by people that we've complained about lights. I mean, that affects two people on three, four houses, not the 100-plus that are back there. So he sat, he listened, he drew the area to show what it looked like, what the problems were. He was very engaged. A lot of us are concerned about soccer fields. Our kids play soccer late at night, because there's no room in Fort Thomas to play soccer. They play out of, they pay for Fort Thomas League Soccer Leagues, and they play out of the city, but people who are not part of Fort Thomas play on the field, so if we're eliminating a field and green space, no one can tell me. I called six months ago to ask how many kids play, and they'll run around and figure out how many kids play soccer or football or knee fields. No one could tell me those answers. So I tried to get answers to come with facts, that 600 kids play soccer, but I couldn't find those, and this isn't my full-time job, so... But Andy encouraged us to be heard by council. A lot of you have seen my face a lot concerning the state park, and I will be honest, I did not feel heard from any of that. I felt lots of pushback. And as you can see, uh, the skate park was a waste of money. No one thought about noise ordinances, or the graffiti, or the children that I saw multiple times riding their skateboards down River Road, because there's no sidewalks. So, anyhow, thank you for listening to us. He encouraged us, like I said, to come and speak and be heard. Our community, I think, wants to be part of the collaboration. That you were the first, first time, let me rephrase that, that someone has said, sure, let's meet up. From Mr. Robinson, has told me multiple times, the project is starting in October. That has been his, since the first meeting of collaborating with the school board, it's starting in October. So I urge you guys, looking at the survey, if you look at it, top concerns are there's no police presence. I think, I don't know how many people heard me talk about how I called, um, multiple, multiple times for double parking. Admittedly, you were very kind. You didn't realize what road I was talking about when we were at the meeting. You're like, oh, that road. So it's frustrating when a lot of you aren't driving back there, but I called and told, been told with the double parking that an ambulance can fit through, so they're not gonna call, or they're not going to move the vehicles, multiple times. So, police presence, the double parking, no sidewalks. I think some of the sidewalks have been added back. It's really hard to read the drawings without an architect, but I think for Mr. Robinson, he did say those are added back, and our road is added back. But when asked if our community is satisfied with the communication from city council or school board on this project, the average answer was unsatisfied. I would like to work with you guys to figure out a solution. I'm here. Our community is here. I think a lot of us thought the meeting was at the mess hall, so how can we collaborate? What meetings together, instead of just one person getting an email, or one person getting something? How can we collaborate as a team to make this a beautiful project that all of us are proud of and, and are happy with? Because, again, you guys worked with three other parks in Fort Thomas, and I would say most of us strongly feel that we have not been collaborated with. Yeah.
So are you able to communicate with me and pick a time that you guys can all come up to the city building? We can go on these rooms, we can review the plans, we can talk about all your guys' concerns. I can show you if it's been addressed, if it hasn't been addressed.
So nothing has been...
But I have one question.
I don't, I don't agree with that. I mean, I've seen the trend, I've, I've seen the emails back and forth between you and some with Brian. I think they have been addressed, but...
So a road was added, sorry.
But the road was never taken away. The sidewalks were always part of the...
He took, in the very first meeting at the school board, there was no road. It was a pipe pack. And it was a...
That was one idea. That was one idea that we had. It was never part of, it was on one plan, but it was, it was never like confirmed, right? There, there's a lot of design in the beginning, so I think that, that may be some of the confusion, is that just because there were a couple of designs out that we...
I don't think there was confusion. I think it's frustration that we voiced what our concerns are.
So if we could just, if we could all be, you know, for example, I'm, I'm very free on Thursday.
So, so my question is, who, who, I guess, are you the only one? Are you, like, do other members who should make a vote? Because some, I, do you guys understand all of the plans for projects? Because...
I think you would ask for me to vote with...
We haven't voted on it yet, though, right? I know that we have money on the budget, but we have not voted on...
Any kind of land changes.
On any kind of land that's operating. So we do have a little power of negotiating to get things you want.
Correct. And I want to be very clear, too. If you guys don't think we're fighting for you, I know personally, I've sent several emails to Matt saying, hey, whatever we do up there, we need to make sure it's taken care of. Whatever we take away, we need to add stuff, if it's one of those parts or whatnot, because I think they should be added into the budget and done at the exact same time that the, because you're already gonna deal with...
Well, and, and that's the communication that's not had, because we've asked for pocket parks. We've asked for, our neighborhood, if you look at it, a long time ago, was told that when the salt bill was done, they were gonna do landscaping. That never happened. We have gravel lots. There's, uh, there's fences that we're told the city was gonna take care of, and they're not taking care of. So that's communication that we're not told.
I just would, you know, be very clear, though, with this... Very clear though, when this project happens, because it's going to happen, you know, it's not going to be perfect. But I promise you, I've been reaching out and hopefully, it has been fantastic and now that you've come up here, I think we'll come, I'm hoping that we'll come to a plan.
Um, I met with all you guys, I, a couple of days later, emailed Matt a lot of the concern.
Yeah.
And I haven't sent that back to you.
Well, well, wait, you, yeah, we did here.
Addressed, all, you know, I, I think, uh, everybody wants what's good for your neighborhood.
Yeah.
But, but continuing and having a meeting with Matt where all of your, all of your concerns are addressed, it's just, it's the next step.
Thank you.
I think, I think, now I know Matt's right again.
Great.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, Brian's probably, you know, obviously he's, it's their project, but I have no problem making sure that everything in the plans is the things that you were. You know, we have other ideas, so I think it'd be good for all of us to meet.
I have your ball.
Availability.
Working as the city portion, the city's not voting to make sure that whatever you need is down there, you get.
Forward, they need our.
Well, that's where, where it's confusing is if, how can they start a project in October, which they keep telling us they're going to start, that doesn't have a traffic study, that doesn't have X, Y, and Z. When asked about their environmental studies, he said, we have to comply with them. I, I guess that like, they don't.
We can, we can, we'll go over all that and then if nothing else from our meeting, you'll have Alyssa, things to go to the school with or.
Then I guess they're starting in October and I'm at like, what is he saying?
They haven't even put out the bid yet, I mean, that's the goal.
Well, he told me the bid will be in September and they're starting in October.
That's, that is the goal, but we all know with, with everything, I mean, everything's got to fall in line, there, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces. So yes, the goal is to start in October, the goal is to finish in the spring, I don't think that's going to happen.
What is the best way for, uh, contact for the neighborhood? Like if we want to set up a meeting, you know, I, I don't know everyone in the neighborhood, so how do we brainstorming together of how you make something like that happen?
For, for the whole.
I, I, I mean, there's so many questions after question and after question and it's a large project.
Well, let's, let's just start with everybody that you can talk to.
Okay.
This week and see if you have availability on Thursday. Okay, well, I'll host here, or we can host at the mess hall if you want, as, as long as it's open, I can even be there.
Okay.
Just, I have technology here.
Okay.
So let's just start with that and then just see how that meeting goes, if we need to expand with mailers or things like that, then we can kind of cross that bridge when we get there.
Thank you, and and sorry if I sound hostile, it's just, it's, I think we're just frustrated because we do ask questions and people don't know how many houses we have, so it's just, it's, it's hard. So, thank you for hearing me.
We feel like the school railroaded us.
Absolutely understand the frustration and thank you Katie for your comments. I'd ask Matt, when you guys schedule that meeting, could you at least let council know so that if we're able to attend it, we, we'd be more than happy to attend if we can, we all have day jobs too, so depending on the scheduling, um, certainly, you know.
We can only have seventy council there, or it becomes a forum and then becomes a public meeting and.
That is a good point.
So that's why I, I think it'd be good, you know, anyone that wants, obviously council wants to get in there, as long as we have three or less. Um, but after that meeting, you know, Katie can, she thinks what I'm giving her is garbage, she can reach out to you guys and, but at least I think that'll, that'll help to get the ball rolling and, and make sure we're all on the same page about this.
Sure, yeah, just, just let us know when you need it, if you don't mind, that'd be great. Thank you very much. Um, that is the end of our visitors and communication sign in sheet, so we are going to move on with our agenda.
Well, can I, actually, can I be added to that, that whatever?
Yes, absolutely.
That whatever?
Yes, please come up and just say your name and address.
I'm Vicki Flummets, I live on, um, County Harris in Fort Thomas. And I was going to say for the meeting that he's deciding to have for those people, because I don't have his kid that goes to school anymore there. I mean, my son, Donnie, graduated and all that good stuff. But, um, can we make it where Robinson could come do or whatever and he can give us his input? Because, I mean, we're coming, we, okay, we pay the taxes, we do have a school tax, we do Kansas City tax and stuff. So would you guys be could, I don't know the word you would say, be working together?
We, and we are.
Okay.
I would recommend, my mic is loud, I would recommend us meeting with just me first, because if, if what you guys are saying, we need to change some things.
Right.
Brian and I won't be, we'll be competitors, right? Because if I'm one to change things that he's wanting to do, I don't know if it's best for us both to be in the same meeting initially. Does that make sense? We're negotiating, I don't like to negotiate when another party that might be adversarial to me and negotiate with you at the same time, it gets challenging, I've, I've done that with, with Route Eight and I try to keep.
Is this meeting a September combined meeting with?
It'll be October. Yeah, so that'd be a perfect meeting, you get all this kind of vetted through the city, we can bring up at the joint meeting and kind of have a, a better.
So there's a, there's a joint meeting between city council and school board in October, so that's another time.
Okay, I, I mean, I'm done with the kids, you know, so I'm really not there. So like, really, older people back there don't know half of this stuff. I was talking to a couple of other people just walking the other day and then went like, when are they doing that? When's that going to happen? You know, I keep hearing that. Okay, my other second thing is, I'll get off that topic. Uh, my second thing is, is I'm concerned about the golf cart, but I do think the golf cart, if you put your kids in the seatbelt and you're not driving that, you're only going like eighteen miles an hour. I know some people have gone faster, believe me, but, you know, I think if you use common sense, most people are. I mean, nobody's going to have an infant out there on it, I hope not, but.
I do.
Okay, well, I mean, like, I have a grandson that's four years old and he's funny as can be and, you know, rides very, doesn't get a screen holler, you know, all that good stuff. So I mean, play leeway with that, you know, give or take. You know what I mean? You, because, you, you know, you hear, oh, so and so is really strict and so and so is this, you know, it's just, you need to play leeway with it.
I like your parenting style.
Well, you know what? I was, I, I'm born back in the fifties, so let's put it that way, but anyway, but, um, um, I just think there needs to be some leeway in different things, because you can't put a car seat in with a seatbelt because there's only one seatbelt and then you have another seatbelt over that with a car seat on a golf cart, unless you're going to have to get double seatbelts and all this other stuff. And I am a golf cart, you know, I'm number forty-five or forty-seven or something, so, but anyway, but I'm just asking.
Thank you.
Think about that generally.
I personally don't like the seatbelts because I think if you get hit or something one year, that's more problematic.
Yeah, okay, I work in a hospital too, so, but anyway, but thank you, I just wanted to say, I just think Robinson, but he does throw up a point and I didn't think of that, that you guys would be at each other saying this, this, and, and make sense, thank you.
Thank you very much, and yeah, Matt, in general, is a great point of contact, just for, for issues, you know, any issue that comes, Matt's a great place to start because he can disseminate information to the council as necessary um, versus trying to rally up, you know, six individual members, it's, Matt's always a great place to start, so please keep that in mind. Um, that is the end of our.
Can I say something in response to her golf cart thing, what you just said? Can I?
In fairness, ma'am, it's, it's really not necessary, I think everybody heard you, they heard her, they'll have an opportunity to, uh, talk to people later on and everybody gets their chance to speak, sorry.
I just want to say one thing.
I, I'm probably not realist, I'll be anyway, so.
There, I mean, there was, there was a very bad accident in, um, I think it was Orange Beach and it was the summer and the ceiling was twenty-five and it wasn't the person driving the golf cart because the accident was the other driver and a brat, a person who just got married was killed. So I want you to take it, just because it's going eighteen miles an hour, it doesn't matter. So I think you need to understand that it's just not that easy, like you said, you agree with the parenting, I don't.
My idea was, sometimes, sometimes it's, it's good to be a little soft, you know, every parent.
I understand that, but when it comes to safety, I don't think so.
You know, I mean, why didn't you email all of us doing this?
All right.
Ma'am, I, I wasn't trying to be disrespectful.
No, I understand.
And I understand how passionate you are about it, thank you.
Absolutely.
Then there's someone back here who wants to.
I didn't sign in.
Sign in, didn't go to sign in.
Absolutely, we can do that, and I wouldn't just say, I'm, I know I'm, I'm, I'm just the acting there, I'm not air pause, but, um, and there's a lot of new people here, which is awesome, so, so keep that coming. When you guys come to the meetings, please try and remember to sign in if you'd like to speak, just because it really helps us stay on schedule and, and just be respectful of everybody's talk, so, thank you very much, but yes, come on up.
My name is Jayper, I live on, uh, County Harris and I just am curious about Fort Thomas being a smart city.
Can I stop, can I stop right there?
Absolutely.
I have no idea how this started or why you guys are so passionate about it. That, that was a mistake, it was a misprue on a website from, I guess, California. We are not a smart city, we're not from a smart city, we're, well, true, but for that, the, the capacity you're talking about, we have not signed up, we have not agreed to anything, I emailed them and told them to remove us, they've already agreed to remove us.
Exactly, that's where I went, thank you.
Like you said.
We're very effective.
See, we do get things done.
Okay, folks, let's move on here, we've got, um, and this, this, this portion of the meeting is going to be pretty quick. I know for those of you who aren't aware, we are meeting again in two weeks and there will be your typical reports from officers and the police chief in fire and that, so, um, we're going to hold off for two weeks on that. Um, we don't have any new old business to discuss on the agenda as well, we don't have any new business to discuss. So we'll move on to ordinances, resolutions, and orders, um, and I'm happy to review it.
If I could, normally I talk about these, um, and I, even though council knows, just. There's three of them right there. I feel like I'm on C-span. Just, I, I did want to go over the charter communication franchise agreements. Um, this is renewing a ten-year agreement for another ten-year term. Uh, there is no, uh, franchise fee that goes along with this, the citizens are paying. Uh, what this does is regulates what charter communications is allowed to do in our right of way, so when they add, uh, wiring, things like that, um, that's what this agreement is, we've added a few things to the agreement from last year, one specifically about having to follow the DRB rules um, in the CBD area, so just want everybody to know that franchise agreement, um, that's, that's the purpose of that and of course the tax ordinance, everybody's aware of that, thank you.
Thank you, ordinance O fourteen, twenty twenty-three, and ordinance authorizing mayor to execute a non-exclusive franchise agreement with Spectrum Mid-America LLC, known locally as Charter Communications, for ten years for construction, placement, maintenance, and operation of cable television, internet, and or telephone services along in, on, over, and under the public driveway within the city of Fort Thomas, Kentucky, all upon the terms, conditions, and covenants contained in the gave a franchise agreement. It's the first reading, uh, ordinance number O fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
Ken, could, could I say something about this before it becomes a first reading? Um, I, uh, been studying this, uh, our budget and the tax rate for, uh, for the entire day and it appears to me that, uh, in consideration of the current economic state of our economy, that we don't need to take the four percent increase, that we could, I, I'm not saying that we scrap and redo a budget, but we could continue with that same budget by pulling that difference out of our reserve fund.
Okay, we would have to re-advertise for everything and we would miss, I wouldn't miss our deadline for all that. We discussed that during the budget.
I, I, I got into today, I'm not going to, if, if we have to vote on it, I'll have a no vote. I, I believe that we can do it, we have, if you look at our, our debt, we owe, we have ten million dollars in debt. Our debt service reserve fund is nine million. Our payment every year through the debt is seven hundred thousand dollars. Our reserve fund is about six million dollars, I don't see why we can't just skip the four percent increase.
I mean, does that affect us, like, do we get fines or anything like that?
We wouldn't necessarily get fines, we would have to pull also money from reserves to cover our waste fee expenses.
We, what's waste fee?
Because the waste fees reflect on the tax bills, we wouldn't have that, that would then be, that would then be something we would have to pull on reserves.
When, when does that do, when's that made? And we have to have this done by?
That we, well, taxes are due October thirty-first.
On what?
October thirty-first.
October thirty-first, so wait, two months?
Correct.
Less than two months and then, and then re-advertize, which is twice in every two weeks, right? You have to do it once in two weeks and second in two weeks, we have sixty days.
We gotta have another.
Meeting?
Two readings. Second meeting and.
And a reading can be done within twenty-four hours of the first reading? Am I correct?
It can. Over sixty days.
Just out of curiosity, can you, you tell me what the four percent increase means to the average Fort Thomas homeowner?
Twenty dollars for every hundred thousand, maybe? It's tens of thousands, you say every hundred thousand?
No, 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 the average Fort Thomas homeowner, what is the increase? It's forty dollars. I spent thirty-eight dollars at RVs last night, uh, would like to note to feed my family, I spent thirty-eight dollars.
RV is by far the most expensive.
No, additionally, you realize that the Fort Thomas City Penns schools actually end up charging homeowners an additional hundred and twenty dollars. So the average homeowner, I believe, assumes that if we freeze taxes, that their taxes will freeze for next year. That is not the case, the Fort Thomas City Penns School District is voting on their comp plus four and will take it, no questions asked.
Andy, if we, I think what we need to do is go ahead and have first reading, if council wants to have a special meeting to discuss this, then we can make alterations after that and, and let me see what the impact is going to be time-wise, because, you know, after, there's, there's a lot, there's just a lot to it. Even just, even just voting by that time, because then we have to get it to, then we have to get it for any reason.
I, I realize that, I don't have too much of anybody's time, but, like, we voted on the budget a couple of months ago, before we vote on the increase. And when it comes to fund accounting, which is what, you know, municipalities use, they spend what they get. So, and, and just a quick story, I was working at Wright Pat Air Force Base in my early twenties and I would build and hit down cubicles and move them around, which General said, Andy, I want my cubicle torn down from here, moved a hundred feet over there, so me and my crew did it. Then when it was done, he said, Andy, uh, I want you to tear it down and put it back. And I, I remember asking him, I said, uh, I said, why would you spend all that time when it appears you knew you were just going to move it back? He said, well, if I don't spend all of my budget, I'm not going to get any more next year. And, and I just disagreed with that method of thought in running anything. So I don't see why we need to automatically take.
Well, I do agree with you, but I also will interject and say that that's not actually how we operate.
I, well, what I'm saying is, is we don't need to take an increase every year, especially during the, you know, everybody's got to pay a whole lot more at Kroger.
Following what Matt said, I think we need to have a first reading tonight because we've got to have it, there will be a second reading. I don't think anybody, based upon the fact that the budget was approved, I don't think anybody came here today prepared to discuss in detail some of the issues you are wanting to discuss now, and I think everybody needs to have an opportunity to do a deep dive. I think they've done their deep dive, but to do it again and take a look at it, and then when we come back, if there's, uh, a vote, uh, to the contrary, then that's what it is. But I don't feel like everybody here is, is probably ready, because I didn't know about this until you said it right now, and I doubt the thing.
I also didn't know that you had any reservations from the budget that you were.
I, I read about, I read all this, all day long.
Okay.
Right, and, and I'll just, I'll just mention too, I mean, kind of a procedural thing, and that you don't have to follow procedure certainly in all, in all instances, but this four percent, I've done it with council, this is my third year, and we've talked about it at length every single year, and so I know we, we did adopt the four percent last year in the budget, um, the two years prior, we did not, and that had a lot to do with COVID amongst other things, that was the primary driver, is my understanding. Um, but when it comes down to this, like, Tim's exactly right, I mean, Andy, to, you know, to be fair, you mentioned it right before we banged the gavel and started the meeting. Um, I, I'm more than happy, I think it's a great educational opportunity to have this conversation every single year. Um, there's, but this is one of those things where, at least in my opinion, the sausage kind of gets, it doesn't, you know, the sausage gets made before you come to the council meeting, because this is a very complex issue and, and, you know, I'll, I'll just speak for myself. Um, I was comfortable adopting the four percent prior to, um, just when you mentioned it before the meeting. That doesn't mean I'm not happy to, to open my mind and reconsider that, I've, I've talked to people on both sides of this as well. Um, you know, I personally think that Fort Thomas is a great financial footing, it's not just because of the four percent, and we can go on and on about that. Um, but it certainly has helped compound over time and we haven't taken it every year. Um, but, you know, Joe, Joe mentioned it's not a whole lot of money, to me, it doesn't really matter if it's a thousand dollars a household or if it's twenty dollars a household, but we're still talking taxpayer money and it's our job to be. We're still talking taxpayer money and it's our job to be responsible and be good stewards of that for all of you. And I'm just mentioning all this because we are trying very hard to do that. And we'll have this conversation and we've had it many times before. And I know for a fact we're gonna have it in depth next year. So, um, appreciate it and, and that's, that's all I've got to say about it.
I'd like to say a little, I didn't, I've always thought about this every year. We haven't raised it once or twice. So I think it was consistent for twenty or thirty years, they raised it four percent. And, and you know, Matt, you've sent out more information than I've ever gotten. And I really appreciate each other's numbers for the other cities, uh, what they pay compared to us. And I, I can't thank you enough for that, trying to make sure we understand where we're going. And I'm a big believer that people didn't realize what they had until they moved here. Once they moved here, they started really digging in the, uh, they started seeing the numbers and I never realized what things cost. I've always thought we should always raise like a half a percent above what this one said in the mic, what the inflation was. So I went back and looked at inflation today and it, it was kind of amazing to me that other than last year, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, it raised over ten percent. It was eight percent last year, right? Which is crazy, right? And for the last twenty years, it's only raised two percent, right? So I just think that moving forward, I understand we're a little late in the game this year. We have a bunch of new council members and it's very confusing that we definitely reconsider what we do based on the actual inflation for the country too as well, you know? So, um, it's, sometimes when you get too much money, it's not a good thing, you know? When you have a hundred percent of your, I don't know what it's called, slush fund, what do you call that?
Reserves?
Reserves, at a hundred percent.
It's almost like German slush.
How is it slush? Your reserves are a hundred percent. Sometimes it's better to be sixty percent because it doesn't allow people to use the money or spend it more wisely, as you mentioned it, you know what I mean? Sometimes, uh, when you have too much money, you get what you want, not what you need all the time too. And I think that's also proven going forward for some stuff. But it is, it's a fine line here because people used to get what they want. You know what I mean? So, so I definitely, but I do thank you for all the information you sent. And I agree with Andy, I think it would be nice to sit down with him and discuss.
And I would suggest, I, I can't imagine having that type of analysis and conversation unless you have Joe and Matt involved in it. Because it is very complicated. And, and I think it's gonna take any council member that has a misgiving or concern, you're not doing your due diligence unless, look, these gentlemen.
I thought Casey would run this.
Casey's dying to do that. With all that said, I think we need to review ordinance. And, and I, I hope everybody understands this isn't happening tonight, uh, that we're not gonna vote. And so there is an opportunity to continue review, but I think procedurally, we need to move forward. Ordinance number O fifteen twenty twenty-three and ordinance providing for the imposition levy collection and apportionment of the taxes of the city of Fort Thomas, Kim County, Kentucky for the year twenty twenty-three and fixing the tax rate.
And that is just a first reading and that's also the last thing that we have on the agenda. Matt, did you have anything else or any council members have anything they'd like to add for the rest?
I just want to add just to that, being a new councilman myself and just to kind of give you guys ease. When it was explained to us originally, it, it did seem to make sense. I need to go back, sounds like we maybe brush up on some things, but I'm happy to do that. I would like to understand a little bit more. But when we originally talked about this, you know, the compounding interest and all the repercussions, if it weren't, it, it made sense at the time. But I would be happy to sit down with you or anyone else, just, I just want to put that on record. Like I'm happy to look at it again, but.
And I, look, this is my philosophy and this is part of what I love about this job. Have, we can have these conversations amongst ourselves so long as we're not breaking the quorum. But let's take the time to do it outside of council. And, and I'd like to learn exactly what you found today. And I'm sure you dedicated a ton of time to it. So appreciate that, but I think it's important that we all have an opportunity to, to meet amongst ourselves without breaking the quorum so that we kind of have a feeling about, you know, what direction we think we ought to go. And it's not just this issue, but it's any issue. That's, that's my philosophy on how local government should run. And we do a pretty darn good job of it, so.
Is that what you were suggesting, Tim? After the, after the reading, which procedural, right? Because I've had similar thoughts and conversations about, you know, what Andy's pointed out. But we're not having another formal meeting. It was just time to discuss.
And we can have a finance committee meeting next week. I mean, where the council wants to consider redoing this. And tomorrow obviously is going to be dedicated to figuring out what the impacts are if we change direction right now.
Inside that, inside that, uh, those details, can you, can you spell out for us what it means if you don't take comp plus four this year and what it means in the future to, to run a, run a long-term number? But for, for forward the meeting, would you have that in fact?
I think the question was just what, Tim was, what were you, you were suggesting, just go ahead with the first reading. From a procedure standpoint, it needs to be done. But then we could have informal conversation about it within the group.
And so Brad hit the nail on the head. You can't have work.
Can't, right.
But if you wanted to meet with.
Well, you can do it on the meeting next week as a finance committee.
You can do it. And if you and Andy wanted to talk about Andy's findings, you can do it.